Thank you very much. Dr. Smith, I'm pretty close to you.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland Board. And we are here to discuss the District Professional Learning Community Wednesday collaborative team meetings. And at the end, I am going to ask for your, I'm going to seek your approval to move forward. So just kind of giving you a heads up. First of all, I want to give you a little background. I know you've had time to reflect on some of the information that we've provided you. I know that you've reached out to seek additional information. So I'm so glad you're in this learning process with us. But I want to tell you a little bit about where we've been. So we began this journey approximately eight years ago. Some were doing it a little bit earlier where we decided we were going to be a PLC district. And what I can say is on that time, we were doing PLC light. And our intention is to always do PLC right. And so that's where we're heading right now. So just a little, I know you've seen this model numerous times, but I wanted to bring your attention to the bottom part of this structure. So in the PLC process, the foundation of all the work that we do relies on those three things. Learning is our fundamental purpose. Notice it doesn't say teaching, it says learning. And that is not just for our students, but for our adults. Learning has to be the fundamental purpose. And that we're committed to working together, meaning that we work stronger and better collectively. Hattie says if we have collective teacher efficacy, that's like an increase four years for one year of growth. So that's what we need to be doing. And then not intentions driven, but results driven. We have to look at the results and not be intention driven. So that's been the model that we've been using. This is the Springdale PLC model, and that's kind of where our journey is going. That our goal is to build this solid structure from all the different people in our district and be PLC strong, PLC right. So we started back, I think in November, talking about how is it we do PLC right? Well, if you, if you kind of look at the structures we've had, eight years ago, we began the journey. And in this process, what happened is we started doing pockets of people having PLCs. And they started growing in their, their ways of doing PLC and getting stronger in their PLCs. But, but what made us light is that not every single person in our district had the opportunity to learn and grow. And so really what this opportunity is, is to allow every single person in our district in a certified position to actually learn and grow and get better at their craft. And as you know, that in isolation, we're not as strong as if we are in collaboration. So if you will look back in, I think December, we had our first kind of deep dive with you into the PLC process. And you said, yes, go ahead and get some feedback from our community. So we reached out, sent out a survey numerous times, and we've collected almost 4,000 results from the survey. And I've broken it up into two parts, but I wanted to tell you where people's thoughts lie in this Wednesday opportunity. So you'll see that solid line above the solid line. We have parents and students, and you'll see the number. You'll see that 86% of the people took it were parents, 13% were students. You can see the average score, the mean score out of five. And on the far right, you'll see those that were in neutral agree or strongly agree for this opportunity on Wednesday. I did want to bring special attention to the students. You would say, well, it's kind of low for students. But one of the things that I found is that students, in many cases, after reading their why, it was because they thought maybe Friday would be a better day to do this. So they were out earlier. So it wasn't necessarily they were for or against it, they just had other ideas of when it should occur and, and maybe some opportunities like that. So, and then down below, you'll see the certified and classified results with 70% falling, just like the parents, and agree, strongly agree, or neutral for this opportunity. I also wanted to bring some comments. There was 2,000 or so comments that I'm, I can't bring them all in. And I did just pick a handful out. You'll notice the first one, somebody that's in favor of it. The reason they're in favor of it is because it actually gives a little bit of downtime for her, her children who spend so much time with all the different things they're doing. You can also see the second one. It does decrease some core CTM times, but it also increases the opportunity for all districts across, all teachers across the district to have this opportunity. The third one is just talking about, I have mixed feelings. And you can kind of go through that. An additional concern is that they will meet three days a week currently, and it will reduce it to 80 minutes, which would be maybe a little over two times a week. So, and then you can see the last, last two, these were a little more, those that were maybe not in favor of it. Some of the comments that we did read were also trying to figure out ways to build capacity in one particular grade band and not in another grade band. And so we tried to take all this feedback that you will see here and try to meet the needs of every single question that we could possibly and address those. So from the surveys, we put together a Q and A. And I'm just going to go through some of these questions. And then at the end of these, if you feel like there's questions I haven't answered, one of us will be more than happy to answer it. We also have a room full of administrators, so like it's a win-win. So I'm letting them get ready just in case. So what are the benefits? So really, this is about the teachers and giving them an opportunity to grow in their craft. This should have, or I shouldn't say should, this will have a direct impact on student achievement. So if we are really focused on student learning and not teaching so much, but student learning, and we look at every single student and what they need to move from one place to the next to move them up, then this will have a dramatic impact on student achievement. Many teachers don't have the opportunity to receive ongoing peer professional development because they don't have an opportunity like this. And so this will give every single teacher in our district the opportunity to have peer professional growth weekly. And then for parents and students, this is an opportunity for them. You know, a lot of students miss instructional time because they're out for numerous appointments, therapies. And so this is also a way for them to build that in on Wednesday so that they're not losing instruction. Okay, so I know this has been a very big question. Will my child lose instructional time? And so the answer is no. The instructional time will remain the same in a few cases, but for most cases, it will increase. And people are asking, how does that happen? So let me try to clarify. So we're adding 10 minutes of instruction to every single day. That's 50 minutes. Currently, the teachers that have in elementary, that have a collaborative team time, spend about 40 minutes. That will, and that is out of instructional time. So they build it in out of instructional time so they can meet. That will now go back to instructional time. So that is another 40 to 50 minutes that goes back. You add those two together, and that's approximately 100 minutes. So we are getting an 80-minute time for, for teachers to meet, but they're getting 100 minutes back of instruction. That's one example. In other areas, it's very similar. Some of them that have a little more time in the CTM time, it will stay about the same. So I don't know if I explained that clearly, but the goal is not to lose instructional time. Okay. Athletes, what happens with our activities? And so we want to be really transparent. We, we don't want to make this decision as a curriculum and instruction team or as a, we, we feel that every school is in a different place. They all have different programs that meet at different times. And so it's going to be really important for us that we get feedback from those individuals that have those programs to make sure we figure out what meets their needs best. But we did want to let the parents know that our goal is to have supervision during this time for students that want to stay and have other opportunities for them. So I wanted to talk about that. Okay. This was a question that popped up, and I wanted to say, they asked, who's going to be creating these CTM agendas? And that was guessing from one of our staff. And the idea is that we have to create a system. So the district will create a system about where they'll be loaded and how they'll, how they'll be, expectations of when they'll be loaded. But the idea is a PLC or a CTM time, a collaborative team time, is really driven by the teachers. And so those teachers will be adding the items to the agenda and working through that. So hopefully that answered the question. This has probably been the most pressing, and I, I want to be very, very, very clear that this is our current look at what we think we can accomplish. We are still working with transportation. So there might be some wiggle room, a couple of minutes here or there that we might have to adjust. But this is what we currently feel will work with transportation. And we also went through the survey results, and based on what parents said about when they wanted to meet, we tried to create these schedules based on that feedback. And so currently, the elementary times will remain the same. They will start at 7:45. The elementary students, I'm going to kind of just look at elementary for a minute. So currently, teachers have 15 minutes. 10 of that will be absorbed with instruction and five of that will not. So the teachers will have five more minutes than a student does in these regular days. So teachers will go from 7:45 to 3:15, which is their current schedule. Students will go from 3:45 to 3:10, which is 10 minutes longer. Then on Wednesdays, they will get out early and they'll go from 7:45 to 1:50. Middle school, this is, they'll be going from 8 to 3:30 for the teachers. Students will start five minutes later. And then on Wednesday, you'll see they'll go from 8:05 to 2:10. And the junior high and high school, we tried very hard to keep that end time at four, but with transportation, we knew we were going to have to make a slight adjustment. So currently, their teachers come in at 8:30 to four, so they'll be coming in at 8:35, and they'll stay till 4:05. And then on Monday, Wednes, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, students will go from 8:40 to 4:05. And on Wednesdays, they will be dismissed at 2:45. And we will try to make sure that we get this out to everybody as quickly as possible. But again, I, I want to say it again, this is very important that we are still working with transportation. This is a model right now that we think will work, but they're also working on some other things, and so there might be a slight adjustment. I know there's been question about when will CT, what will their times be? Keep in mind, they start at different times, so their times will look slightly different. But this is the current expectations of our CTMs. They'll be, elementary will be from 1:55 to 3:15. Middle school, 2:10 to 3:10. And then junior high and high schools, 2:45 to 4:05. And that will be on Wednesdays. Again, it's just tentative because it depends on that first, first set of time, timeframes. And then the last thing is talking about their children. So I know there's concern from parents to say, what's going to happen with my child? And we have tried to look at every possible scenario as people have sent us information. We've tried to immediately get on it and address it. So I want to tell you what we have currently. The parents on Wednesday, the bell will ring when class is dismissed, and parents can either pick up their child at that time or buses will run. So that will be at the end of the instructional time, not at the, not at the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday time. So it'll run earlier. Many after-school programs, if, I think almost all of them have agreed to go ahead and do an earlier, pick, pick earlier start for their after-school programs to accommodate this. So we're working with them. I know Mr. Donnell said a big thank you to our after-school program through COVID. They have gone above and beyond, given us lots of support financially, everything you could possibly think of. And we, when we came up with the idea that we're going to need their help, they came along and said, whatever, what do you need? What, what can we do to help you? And so we do have an after-school program in most of our elementaries and middle schools. And if not, we have a CCLC program. So that's kind of what we're looking at. They have agreed to start earlier with no additional cost to families during that time. Parents must enroll their student in the after-school program, and that is for up to ages 13. So elementary and middle school students can come to that. Yes.
I just want to clarify, so like if they're enrolled, they're paying already, so it says no additional cost.
Yes.
So if your kid isn't in ASP the other four days, like you couldn't just bring them on Wednesday?
Yes, they do have a one day, they, they do have a one day where your child can go for one day. And I've been talking with Ms. Tucker from after-school program about what that cost might be. So there is a one-day cost if you just choose to have your child there one day. And then we also have CCLC programs, 21st Century programs, that are, that are currently working with the, the people in the building to figure out what will this look like for students during this time so they can still get the support they need with the CCLC program. I know Helen Tyson's brought their proposal together, brought their proposal forward, and it was really, really good about how they were going to use some of their current staff to help support that program until the teachers were done with CTM, and then they would go into that after-school CCLC program. So we do have some great ideas that we're moving forward. I know, I'm guessing you guys may have a lot of questions. I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, so is the team. I know you, we've given you a lot of literature on this. We've shared a lot of things with you. You've brought a lot of great ideas to us, and then we tried to figure out solutions. So I appreciate all that, so we were able to move forward with this. I do believe, when I think about the number of teachers in our district that do not have time to collaborate, and they do not have time to grow professionally unless it is being removed from a class and son somewhere, this is a really great opportunity for us to go from, like I said, PLC light to PLC right, where every single person feels valued in our district to have this time to collaborate. Any questions?
Just one thing, if that's okay.
Yes.
I've always understood that if you continually do the same thing, you very likely are going to continue to get the same results. And understanding at this time that our student achievement is our focus. Our community wants our, our children to learn and grow and become great citizens and great employees and leaders. If they are short-changed by inadequate preparation, this is an opportunity for preparation to be really amped up and that peers can work together instead of being siloed alone. I told you the story before, when I first started as a teacher, I was the only social studies person, and they said, your room's down there, and maybe there are some books. That first year was really tough, probably for my staff or for my children, but really tough for me. Having peers to help me walk through that process and become a better teacher faster will improve the students, would have improved my student ability or my delivery in student learning. This is an opportunity for all staff to have that collaborative time. And as we know, and she said it beautifully, collaboration trumps oscillation every time. So this is our, our chance. If our ranking, as far as schools go, if we don't try to adjust, and if it doesn't work, as you said, Ms. Cook, one time, we can change it. We can do better in another way. But this is an opportunity for us to try to push forward and improve our academic achievement. And we need to do that for our kids.
I have a question for all three of you, or an opportunity, I guess, for the three of you. What, what about this program or what about this opportunity has drawn it to you? I mean, I know a lot of people may think that it's, I mean, it's being done across the country, so it's not something that we just dreamed of. But I mean, what about it draws, makes the three of you want to do it? Or makes the three of you want to spread it to your respective schools, whether it's the elementary or middle or high?
I'll, I'll say two things. So one, I believe collective teacher efficacy is so important. That means every single person in every single building has to own every student in that building. It can't be, I'm the English teacher helping to get our reading scores up, or I'm the math teacher trying to improve it. Everybody in that building can have an impact on students' ability to read and their math performance. I think that's where we started years ago down the PLC process of how do we improve? I, I personally know that, and it's, I'm going to say it's been 10 years, but I personally know that we went out on a limb on the school that I was at, and we said, we're going to ensure that every single person has ownership in reading one particular year. And there was high expectations, and it was built with a lot of the collaboration with the teams that did have PLC. And it was the largest state, the largest growth the state had seen that year. And so I personally know the value of collective commitments from people, but people do the best they can. Our teachers are working very, very hard, doing the best they know to do. This is an opportunity to provide them with support with things they don't even know they can do to get better. And I'll let them speak.
I think for me, I think children, regardless of the color of their skin or where they live, deserve a very high-quality education. The students who live on one side of town or in one certain neighborhood deserve the same education that students get in a more affluent neighborhood. And we're only going to do that if we're building the capacity of our teachers, tying back to what Dr. Smith said with collective teacher efficacy. Having, unpacking our standards, looking at the rigor of the standards, and ensuring that what I'm teaching in my classroom is the same level of rigor that somebody else is teaching in their classroom. And then taking that knowledge and that information and bringing it back to students and how they're performing on their assessments is the way that we're going to start moving the needle for all of our children. And that's what makes me very passionate about this work, is my desire to see every child succeed and be successful and grow up and be productive citizens in our community.
I would say that being an educator is an incredibly difficult job. And I think that every educator should be valued in a way that allows them time to collaborate and grow as professionals together. And I think that being an educator goes so much further than planning a lesson and then modifying a lesson. It's how am I going to deliver my instruction? How do I know if my students get it? What do I do when they don't get it? What do I do when they do get it? What does my assessment need to look like? How do I truly know if students are grasping the instruction that I'm designing and delivering? Those conversations are essential to the growth of our professionals, but also to student achievement. And then also, it's important that teachers know where every single child is on the continuum of learning and how to move every single child, wherever that child may be. And I think that it's important to say to our teachers, we value you in a way where we feel it is important to allow you this time to collaborate together, learn together, grow together, discuss every child that you impact every day and where they are on the continuum of learning. Learn from one another, be vulnerable together, be transparent with one another, and let's dig deeper than we ever have before and move every single student in this district. And that is 100% why this is important to me. Secondary teachers, no matter what content area you teach, your content is equally important as an, and impressionable on any child that walks through your door. And I think that we need to invest that time and energy to collaborate across the board.
Board, I'm sure y'all have questions.
Can you elaborate, and I've missed a couple of things, but can you elaborate? I see some of the times on here that had up there earlier, where the additional time is coming from.
Yes.
Elementary starts at the same time and just lets out five minutes later.
So, so elementary, there is a 10, there's 10 minutes added to every single day of the week for each, each grade level. That's 50 minutes. Currently, in elementary schools, I'm talking specifically elementaries, for a teacher to have collaborative team times, they are pulling out of instruction and trying to figure out ways in their schedule to get that once a week, 40, 45 minutes of time. That will now go back to instruction. So you add that 40 minutes with the 50 minutes, and that's 90 minutes of instruction. So, and that was one specific example.
That was going to be my question was, for the parent that has a high school or a junior high student, and they come to me and go, you're an idiot. You're getting rid of, you're getting rid of 80 minutes of instruction time. My kid needs an extra 80 minutes. He doesn't need to be given up 80 minutes. Explain to us how that's going to work. How, how do I tell that parent that's not what's really happening? Here's, here's what we're doing.
So I'm, I'm going to give you some examples of the high school specifically. I know Dr. Greep and Mr. Jones both came in. I'm going to, it's probably been about two months ago with the idea of, let's look at what the schedule would look like to meet these 80 minutes. So they are adding 10 minutes, which will then go into the classrooms. And they have advisory, and one of their solutions was if we absorb advisory during that time, that time will also go back into those classes as well. So that's, I think, 30 minutes. So 30 plus 50 is 80.
So it's a wash. In essence, they're getting the same amount?
For some of the schools, it will be the same, yes.
Same amount of instruction after this is enacted versus before it was enacted?
And it will look different. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, those periods will be longer, and then on Wednesday, they'll be shorter.
There won't be any school of all 31 with less instruction. Everyone is either the same or more instruction than they have today. Elementary will be more for this one. Most of mine in secondary and junior high school are about the same.
The students' instructional day is extending, the teacher's instructional day is gone, so the teachers will spend more time with students than they had.
And keep in mind, we do have guidelines from the State Department that says you have to meet these many minutes, it has to look like this. So we are, you know, when we brought in the high schools and said, let's look what your schedule would look like, that was what our focus was, how are we meeting all these rules and regs that are coming down to us and still, you know, providing students with quality instruction?
I don't have a question. I am good with it. I think probably the most beneficial thing is to make sure we understand, like the couple of questions that Randy and Eddie had about how, how would we explain it when we get questions? But, you know, you guys need to figure out the logistics. That's not us. Ours is the directional purpose of what your intentions are. If we can get our staff and our administrators more professional learning that will benefit our kids, then that's what we need to do.
Thank you.
When I think about this, I think Randy will back me up on this when we went to JB Hunt and saw their collective, collective meeting there. It was something else to watch, you know, watching teachers come together and try to help, you know, certain kids that needed the extra help. And for them all to just have that one meeting to help the one kid that they talked about or they presented to us was amazing to me.
Like a clinical team, as if your, your child had a doctor team.
Any other questions? And we are more than happy if, if something pops up to, you know, provide you with information and before, you know, later on, we'll be more than happy to do that. So I guess at this time, I'm going to seek your approval to move forward with our collaborative team meeting times on Wednesdays.
This would be next year?
Starting next year, yes. We, we, we have a lot of planning to do to prepare everybody so it goes smooth.
And before we move forward, I do want to say, we've done things, Springdale has typically been a leader in the state, if not in the nation. We have done things before that appear and were, when we started them, overwhelming, scary, we can't do it, there's no way. And we look back at several of those things, Don Tyson being one of them. We look back at several of those things, and they were, well, at the time, overwhelming decisions, they were good decisions. I have seen, when I visited at White River, I've seen this work in an entire district. I know that it's overwhelming and it's a lot of work. But when it does happen and when it does work, it is amazing. And I, just from the standpoint of what I saw, I believe that our students and our teachers deserve it.
Can I add one thing? We, we visited with the professionals from the PLC Institute, which helps drive our conversations. And we've had very, very in-depth conversations with a lot of the individuals. And we asked them, what does an ideal timeframe look like? And so I know we have people that have, as you saw in some of the comments, three times a week that they meet. And they said, if this worked, if this work is done right with fidelity, you can do it in 60 minutes. Anything more is going to be amazing. So I want, that has, that has been a very big comfort because I know when people say there's not a possibility of doing this, if we there's not a possibility of doing this, if we, if we focus it right and we structure it right, we can get this work done in this amount of time. We, we will have a laser focus on students and giving teachers that opportunity.
I was just wondering if any administrators in the room from any level want to give your opinion on it or kind of what the feeling in your building is or anything?
Good or bad, too.
Yeah, good or bad. I mean, we'll take both.
Well, I know that the, we've done a lot of thinking. I know the district has done a lot of thinking about this initiative, and, you know, we've learned a lot going through the PLC process this year, taking a team to, to Little Rock. When I think about the teachers, though, that don't have that kind of time, I just think it's the right thing to do. You know, today, we were visiting with some of our ag teachers, and we just said, what, you know, it was about a different subject, but we said, well, what would it be like for you, you know, if you had this opportunity? And it was just like, wow, to be able to have this protected time, to be able to collaborate, not only within our department, but within our feeders, I think it's going to be a game changer. So, I support this. I feel like our teachers support it. There will be an adjustment for those that, you know, have 250 minutes a week and go down to a smaller period. But, you know, if it helps move student achievement across the board, then it's the right thing to do, in my opinion, so.
You know, you mentioned ag teachers. My son that graduated last year was diagnosed with dyslexia, and so, some of the core subjects were a problem for him, but he loved ag. An ag teacher that got him to read just for the sake of reading? And I'm thinking if he would have been on a collaborative team and they could, like, he could have talked to maybe even some of the core teachers about, well, you know, here's kind of what I did to motivate him. I mean, he did, he did well in school anyway, but I think that could be pretty powerful.
No, and I agree, and I'm glad you said that because, you know, I think the vision is not just giving time, but it's giving, you know, purposeful time. You know, as we think about literacy, every teacher's a literacy teacher. How can business support literacy in their content? They're doing it, but are we doing it with a focus that, you know, we could use data to say, you know, how are we all supporting reading through, you know, through, you know, different text or whatever? So, again, I just think it, I think it'll be benefit. So, thank you.
Question for a move forward. So, how many certified folks do you think will impact that have never really had structured PLC?
Definitely.
Anybody? I mean, I mean, how many will this be like a new, new concept?
So, I'm going to say probably about 60% of the high schools, less for the junior high, less, quite, yeah, less for middle school. Yeah. So, right, just right now, I don't have numbers. I would have to ask them in the back, in my back row back there. But for each of the high schools, you can estimate that approximately 60% of the current teaching staff does not have this opportunity. Some of the schools, it may be closer to 65% or even nearer to 70. And when I say that, I'm speaking about Springdale High, Harbor High, and Archer Learning Center. Ms. Bortz's school at DTSO is structured a little bit differently because of their waivers and some of the opportunities that they have based on their learning environment there. Junior highs, I can tell you that in a junior high, only the core teachers have this time currently, no specialty subject. So, no elective teacher in a junior high would have this opportunity currently.
I want to make a motion to approve the district professional learning committee Wednesday collaborative team meeting time. That is a law.
Good. A motion by Mr. Ramos to approve the collaborative team meeting time.
Okay.
And a second by Mr. Owenby. All of those in favor?